This Saturday is the craft show, the spring craft show. It goes from 10 to 3:00 and you'll be amazed with what the crafts are. It's totally sold out, so it will be a big crowd. Then next Saturday and the Saturday after, we have the pancake breakfast, which goes from 8:30 to 1:30. The first pancake breakfast is sponsored by the Recreation Department. The second one is by Willoughby Hills Lions. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Pete DeFranco. He's our City Engineer and he's going to talk about engineering, the building and zoning departments. Pete?
These are just some notes, so you probably won't all be able to see them, but... I'm taking wagers on how long that's gonna last. Well, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Pete DeFranco, the City Engineer, and I've been your City Engineer since 2013. So we're going on our sixth year. And I also am fulfilling the role of Zoning Administrator since April of last year, 2017. So I'm going to talk a little bit about both. In 2017, we issued 10 new permits for new houses. And on the commercial side, East Side Volkswagen Mazda did an expansion of their lot on Sharden Road near Bishop. And then also, we approved a new cell tower at West Miller Road. That should be starting construction this year. As far as the roads, we did the pavement marking project, which restored all the roads in the city. And we also resurfaced Rockefeller from Sharden to Eddy and Stark Drive. So far in 2018, we've issued two new permits for two new houses just through February. So we're kind of on the same pace as last year. However, there's been more commercial activity. The Cleveland Clinic is resurfacing their parking lot and remodeling their pharmacy. The True North gas station will be redeveloped at the corner of Sharden and Somme Center. McDonald's will be remodeling their building inside and out, as well as adding a second drive-thru. Those have all been approved, so they're ready for construction. And we're also working with the shops at Willoughby Hills. They're planning to put in an Aspire Fitness Center where the old Office Max was. So they're working on those drawings currently. We're also waiting for the Meadowbrook Pump Station project to begin. A contractor's been hired and he's scheduled to start construction in a couple of months. As far as street resurfacing, we have four tentative projects, or four tentative roads, which are Caneely, Red Fox Pass, Bates, and Jenny Lane. But those are still tentative. We're still discussing the annual budget. All right, you can flip it. So most of you know the zoning or the building department's going through a transition, so I kind of wanted to touch on what the building department does. It basically has three functions: zoning administration, building code or building enforcement, building code enforcement, and then property maintenance. So zoning administration is what I'm handling currently, and we're the first point of contact for applicants. We also are the floodplain administrator with the Planning Commission, Architectural Board of Review, and the Board of Zoning Appeals. So we're kind of the quarterback when someone wants a permit. We also handle contractor registrations, zoning certificates. And in general, what like a zoning certificate or zoning permit is, is everything outside of the building. Anything within the building walls, you need a building permit according to state codes. And that's what the Lake County Building Department is doing for us. But anything outside the building walls is still handled by the city in the zoning department. So some examples are signage, sheds under 200 square feet, fences under six foot tall, driveways, roofing and siding repairs, as long as there's no structural changes. Window replacements, sewers and waterproofing, above-ground pools, protected area. And if you're not aware of what a protected area is, it's like an environmentally sensitive area along rivers, ponds, and steep slopes. If you're planning to do any work in those areas, you definitely got to come and see the city first. You may need a permit. We also take care of registration of horses and cows and home occupations or home businesses. The team we have on this is myself as zoning administrator, Denise Edwards is our clerk, and Mark Rubus, our Street Superintendent, is our zoning inspector. And then my staff at Bowen is also available to help as needed. I mentioned the building code enforcement that Lake County is doing for us. So any building-related permits need to be obtained from the Lake County Building Department. They also issue certificate of occupancies. And the team is a little larger. When you need a building permit, it could involve several approvals. And I've listed the most common ones here. You need a zoning approval. You may need a floodplain approval. You may need fire department approval. Lake County Stormwater, Lake County Soil and Water Conservation District, Lake County Water Department. So as an example, if you're putting up a new building, you would need at least some of those approvals before Lake County would issue a permit. And the final component is property maintenance. This is to make sure that, you know, ongoing, that the property or the building maintains conformance with what was approved when a permit was issued. Just because, you know, a building has been built and, you know, you've gotten your certificate of occupancy doesn't mean you can start changing things. And the key components or key reason for that is health, safety, and welfare, as well as maintaining property values. Some things that are typically looked at in property maintenance are building maintenance. Make sure the exterior is maintained, your siding, your roof, overhangs, pavement maintenance, vegetation maintenance. You know, your grass can't get too long. Your bushes can't start to get overgrown. Storage of inoperable vehicles. And just general rubbish or garbage accumulation. And the team on this is myself, again, Denise Edwards, Mark Rubus, the fire department. They actually have the authority to enter buildings to check things on an annual basis. Again, my staff at Bowen as needed. And if it gets this far, it eventually goes to mayor's court. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Pete. Next, we have our Root Superintendent, Mark Rubus.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Going to do a, talk about a couple of projects we did last year. In the storm sewer side, we did a total of eight projects. We did Fowler Road, Rockefeller Road crossover, Tall Tr- Rogers Road Storm Sewer, Whirl Road Storm Sewer, and the Stark Road crossover before they paved. And the Rogers Road crossover pipe replacement. And Somrak, we did ditch enclosure. The total of all these jobs is $66,997, which we front the money upfront for these projects and then I submit them to the county for full reimbursement. So we were reimbursed the full $66,000 back to the city. And the projects for this year are, that I have tentatively right now, we're going to replace the crossover pipe on Dodd Road with a larger one. This is down by the cage from like Dodd's Landing West to a crossover to this real deep ditch down there. The Pleasant Valley Road east of the one-way bridge, which is on the south side of Pleasant Valley going up the hill. There currently is a storm sewer there now. It's a red clay pipe that's deteriorated, cracked, and it's 100% full. We haven't had any success cleaning it out. Nonetheless, it needs a lot of repairs. So that one, we're going to replace. And that's going to be our first project this year. And we do already have approval for that one through Lake County. We're potentially going to start that one next Monday. The third one is, there's a deep ditch on Whirl Road. We've been doing it in phases because it's too much to do all at once. This will be the third and final phase of that. And that's from Whirl Road north. It's about 700 feet. So that one will be wrapped up this year also. And then there is a crossover on Graylock, which is going to be a little tougher job because that's the only way out of there. So we're going to do our best to maintain traffic. But there's a large sinkhole developing right now in the middle of the street. And what's happening is they put a steel pipe in underneath and it's, the whole bottom of it's rotted. So it's more egg-shaped now than it is brown. And it is sinking since I've been here for three years. So we're going to replace that. And then also back there, there was a footbridge that connected Graylock to Berkshire Hills Drive, which a lot of residents walk through there to get over to Berkshire from Graylock. We're going to be taking that makeshift wooden bridge out. And there used to be a bridge there because that was a city street. But I don't know what happened to it. It washed out, whatever, and didn't get put back. But we're going to pipe that with two pipes and make an asphalt path. So it'll be a lot safer, so people aren't walking across the, I think it's like 36-inch wide wooden bridge now. We're going to replace that. And then also, this past year, we did a lot of road patching. 502 tons worth. And we do all that by hand. There's seven of us and we go out every day. We mill and fill and we go all over the streets. So like all the potholes you see now, we are filling them because it's winter and you can't get asphalt until April. So just bear with us. If you see them, call. We'll go out and fill them. And they'll all be milled out soon as the asphalt plants open and repaved. Some other things we've been working on is the, last year, we converted the city hall and the police department to LED lights to save energy. And this year, we're almost done with this entire building and we're doing all that ourselves, too. So all the lights you see in here today are no longer fluorescent lights. They're all LED. So it'll be a significant cost savings in the long run. And other than that, that's all I have. We did get our new truck this year. We got a brand-new plow truck. And if all goes well with the budget, we have one in there for next year also, or this year, I should say. Hopefully get it by next year, but we'll hash out the budget and see where we end up. We have two new trucks for the east side. So the guys are happy. I'm happy. We're getting what we need so we can get some things done. Thanks.
You'll be amazed with what Mark can do. Because like, two weeks ago, we were on Somme Center Road deep in sewage water. And he and his crew dug up the forest mane that comes from Cleveland Clinic. And I was there and repaired it. So he does an extraordinary job. Thank you, Mark. The next person I have is our clerk of courts, Janine Mullen.
Good evening. For those of you who I haven't met, my name is Janine Mullen. I'm the clerk of court at Willoughby Hills. I've been with the city since March of 2008. I began with the city as the finance assistant, transitioning, actually working a dual role as role as finance assistant and deputy clerk until resuming the role of clerk of court in April or, no, May of 2011. So I'm probably going to be the shortest one on this panel for time. I'd also like to ask Larry, will you come up, please? Our judge is here, our magistrate, Larry Huberts. So I'd like to have him for the presentation as well. Looking back from 2016 compared to 17, our numbers were down. There's a lot that goes with that. We also had two officers down at least. It was an unfortunate situation. I'm sure all of you are aware of. That being said, the numbers for 2018 are already picking up for the month of January and February. For 2017, Mark, among with his other responsibilities, finished our installation of the bulletproof glass for the court and for the finance department. So we have been asking for that, for the protection because of what we do see come through the court. And we're very, very grateful for that.
It was free?
Yes, it was. Mark got it donated by a bank that was demolished for the RNC. So we received 56, Mark? Is that right? $56,000?
Yes.
$56,000 worth of bulletproof glass at no cost to the city. So I believe that the whole project cost the city $13,000. Is that right, Mark?
Yeah.
Approximately. So again, very grateful.
Janine, thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Larry Huberts. And it's my pleasure to serve the city as the magistrate in our Willoughby Hills Mayor's Court. I have been serving as magistrate, oh, I guess about 14 years now. I was appointed by the mayor and ratified by council. And it's been my pleasure to be here. As I look out into the audience, I don't see a lot of familiar faces, so that's good. That means that I'm not seeing you in the court. And that's probably a plus. To describe what I do as the magistrate in a mayor's court, I'm not an elected official. I am appointed by the mayor, approved by council. And as I said, we conduct the court and we try to conduct it with the same thoroughness and efficiency and fairness that you hear and will, or hear and see in Willoughby Municipal Court. The difference being, a mayor's court is technically not a court of record. So that means that every word that is spoken is not recorded. There's not a court stenographer. But our philosophy is to conduct the court with the same seriousness, the same efficiency, and the same due diligence in meeting out justice as any other court system. We work hand-in-hand with the police department. Janine handles the finances, handles the reporting. She and her staff do a tremendous job in keeping us efficient and up-to-date. And I apologize to tell you, I don't know anything about the numbers other than our police are doing a great job in serving the city. They're enforcing the laws. And ultimately, what happens, and as you all probably remember from your government classes or history classes back in school, you know, you have the legislative branch, you have the executive branch, and you have the judicial branch. Well, I'm pleased to be a part of the judicial branch. And what we do, whether it's a zoning ordinance violation or whether it's a traffic ticket violation, we handle certain misdemeanor cases. Anywhere from a minor misdemeanor, maybe a simple traffic case, all the way up to some serious cases called first-degree misdemeanors. If it's a felony, felonies are automatically arraigned with preliminary hearings in Willoughby Muni. And then typically, they go out and are handled by our common police court in Painesville, which is the seat for Lake County. The cases we primarily hear are traffic cases. And our traffic cases, our thanks in part to what Mark enforces through building, housing, zoning, and most importantly, our law enforcement. I can't tell you how important our police department is to the city, just their visibility, just their presence, and the great job they do. You know, as we all see in the newspapers, as we all see on TV, it's probably one of those thankless jobs. But boy, are we grateful when the police officers arrive. And so what they do is they police our community. When they issue a ticket, the procedure is, they can call our clerk, find out what the cost is if they just want to waive that ticket, and they send a check in. If they have an issue or a question, or if their case is not subject to just sending a check in and they have to come to court, we see them in our court. We conduct court, it's called the Willoughby Hills Mayor's Court. We have that twice a month, typically every other Tuesday. We accommodate people if they can't make it. Janine will set new dates for them. But ultimately, if you have to be in court, you do come in. And you get to come before me. We have our police officers who provide security and maintain control and order in the court. And for the most part, we run very smoothly and very orderly. If any of you want to come and watch court, I'd certainly invite you and welcome you. Our goal is to be consistent, is to be fair. And I heard, I think Judge Allen told Judge Field when he was taking office, you know, for the most part, nobody goes to court. We don't want to go to court. We're good law-abiding people. If we get a ticket, we write a check and we hope not to be caught speeding again. But when you come to court, we try to make it that every first-time appearance is going to be something that you know you are treated fairly, courteously, and with respect. And that is our goal. And as the magistrate, I do my best to be consistent. To be consistent in explaining things, to be consistent in issuing the sentences, and to make sure everybody knows and understands, you know, what the procedure is. I don't give legal advice. My staff does not give legal advice. We are not allowed to do that by Ohio law. But we are courteous and helpful. And we certainly give an opportunity if somebody needs a continuance to get, consult with a lawyer. We have a prosecutor who works with our court. A lot of individuals will come to court and they feel, well, maybe they want to talk to the prosecutor. Maybe they're not sure about walking in front of me and getting the case resolved. And we always make them available to see our prosecutor. Todd Sapola's worked with us for many, many years. Very thorough, very efficient. He understands and knows the laws. And he's worked with the police department intimately. And I think we do conduct a very thorough and very efficient and a very fair mayor's court. From the standpoint, Janine and I are very pleased to serve the community. We welcome any questions anytime. I know she's there full-time and there's an open-door policy. And standing here right now, if anybody has a question of me, I'd be happy to try and answer for you. But other than saying it is a pleasure to serve the community, it is a pleasure to work with the mayor, his staff, and our police chief and our police department. I just thank you for this opportunity. Any questions, anyway? Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Thanks, Janine. And the next person is the newest member of the team, Gretchen White-Brant. She's going to recap the Recreation Department and the Community Center. Gretchen?
Thank you. All right, as you wish. If you notice something different about the building, raise your left hand. New carpeting installed first two weeks of January. If you look around, the efforts of a lot of people on the Willoughby Hills staff here. New carpeting up and down, which really made it a much more pleasant situation. In my, I started at the end of December. In my brief tenure here, one thing that hasn't impressed me, I was impressed when I interviewed for the job. But we get a lot of folks who are not Willoughby Hills residents, and they come into the building and they look to view the rooms. And their comments are always positive about how beautiful this facility is. So I think it's something that you folks should be very proud of. There's a lot of activity that goes on here with the library and the rentals that go on in addition to the community activities. So really, as a person from the outside, I'm not a resident of Willoughby Hills, but I've been very impressed with what this community's trying to do for not only its residents, but for the people in surrounding areas. I have people coming as far as Bury, Ohio, to hold events here. So I think it's pretty impressive. I don't know a lot about 2017. I know that the Recreation Center sponsored 15 activities in addition to, I believe, four or five art gallery, glory. And we have the same amount of activities. Minus one pancake breakfast this year. Instead of the three pancake breakfasts that take place in March, we're having one from the Willoughby Hills and then the Lions will have one. Coming up at the end of March is the Extravaganza. Last week, I would say we had 40 energetic volunteers. We stuffed over 10,000 Easter eggs for the children to go scrambling for. That event will be March 24th. Calvary Assembly is gracious enough to host that event. You should be, if you know of anyone that wants to attend, you should be pre-registered to attend. A lot of our event information is found on the website under the city Willoughby Hills. So please, if you're looking for something to do or what's upcoming in the community, use the website as a source of information. Following this March, I feel like I was thrown into the fire because there's four huge events. I was running around like a deer in headlights. But we kind of take a little, I don't want to say breather, but the next big event coming up then would be Safety Town, which is an educational program for young children. I'm just working with one of our police officers today. They cover a lot of things like bike safety, bus safety, home safety. So if you have a young one, you know of a young one that would benefit from that type of programming, please look for the information on Safety Town. And then we're kind of mirroring the same events that we've had in the past years. We'll have the Corn Fest and Garage Sale Days in August. Unity Day will be in September. Touch a Truck will be in September. The Fall Craft Show will take place in October. There is a wellness run this year with the Cleveland Clinic. The Halloween Party will take place in October. Trick or Treat will take place in October. And then we'll wind down in December with the Winter Fest, Christmas Card Lane, and Breakfast with Santa. So I hope you take advantage of what the city is offering and get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Next, we have our Finance Director, Frank Bruchek. And he'll give you a lowdown of the finances.
Hello, everybody. My name is Frank Bruchek. This will probably be the most exciting presentation of the night. And to warn you. First of all, I'd like to tell you, I think that the city's finances, while they're very challenging, are in good hands with all of these people. In these kinds of discussions, people tend to focus on the Finance Director, but really, it's the result of the efforts of all the people that you see up here. They work very, very hard to responsibly utilize the resources that you're kind enough or force enough to provide us with. And we do, you know, we do appreciate it. We do take it very seriously. I've been with the city since 2008. I came here on a temporary, a temporary contract. When I started here with the city, financially, it was a catastrophe. The records were so bad that they couldn't be audited by the State of Ohio. Quite frankly, we don't, I don't know where we started, when we started officially. In 2008, our general fund had an $18,000 In 2008, our general fund had an $18,000 balance. But I can tell you from having to, having to go through the records, in 2008, we probably, we probably were several hundred thousand dollars in the hole because of unreported liabilities that existed at the time. But since that time, we've been able to, we've gotten, we've gotten the city reconciled. And we've been able to produce reliable financial information. Our budgets went, our budgets went from a stack of Excel schedules, maybe not that big, with just a lot of numbers on, to a pretty detailed budget book, which we have on the, we have on the website, pretty much detailing everything, everything that we do. Like most cities, in the, in the last 10 years, it's been a challenging time for, for cities. While we, during, you know, during this time, I became Finance Director in 2011. Predecessor, predecessor retired. Our finance department is two and a half people. I'm a part-time finance director. I'm here about 50 to 60% of the time right now. And I'm assisted by a finance assistant and my assistant finance director, who handles the payroll, primarily handles the payroll and, and human, the city's human resources. To put things in, you know, put things in perspective, it's been, it's been a period of time for every time that there's some good news, some bad news to offset. Today, in 2000, in 2018, we're going to be operating on about, near general fund, on about the same amount of revenue as we received in 2008. And that's because income tax, income taxes grown during that 10-year period of time, there was a change in income tax, which kept, which kept our credit to the residents, the, of the work outside the community at the same, with effectively about half of a percent. Our income tax rate increased, increased to 2%. And so we're collecting, we're collecting about $1.6 million more income tax revenue in 2000, and anticipating 2018 than we did in, in 2008. Of that, you know, of that money, approximately half of that comes from, from the businesses in the city. The lion's share comes from the people who work in the city, from never holding taxes. Rest of that comes from the net profit taxes that the, that the businesses pay. The other 1.8 million comes from the residents. And then, now that money comes from, from residents who either live and work in the city or work in communities where their income tax rate is less than the city's income tax rate and therefore don't receive the full, the full credit. In fact, in fact, the people, the people who are affected by that actually make out better than most of the individuals who work outside of the city. Because in most cases, people, most of our residents work in communities where their income tax rate is 2%. So they're paying 2% to the city where they're working in and then a half of a percent to the, to Willoughby Hills. Most of the, most of the people who live in the city and work out in, in, either work in the city or work in, or work in cities where the rate is less than 2%, the total, the total cap and what they pay whole communities is, is about 2%. So we, we're, government is a labor, it's a labor-intensive activity. Last year, we spent a little bit over $13 million in operating expenses. And approximately half of that was, you know, was on staffing. Compared to 2008, we spent, I think, about 12, about 12.2 million dollars overall. You know, and the ratio, you know, the ratios, you know, the state, you know, the state is the same. Primarily, our funding sources come from income taxes, you know, it's the number one source. And that's going to be true statewide, pretty much. That's the primary driver of, of communities. Our other, our other major funding sources would be the mayor, would be the revenue from the mayor's court, from property taxes, and then state-provided funding. But as I said, every time we, over the years, we have good news and bad, bad news. In terms of, you know, in terms of state fund, then it's been cut back tremendously from what it was 10 years ago. In the general fund, we're receiving over, about $600,000 less in 2018 than we received in 2008, primarily because the state, in order to balance its budget, reduced the local government funding that it provides to, to all. In addition to which, our property tax revenue took, in that period of time, took some ma, took some major hits because of a few changes that the state made. And, and one of which that the economy just, you know, that the economy, that the economy, the state eliminated the tangible personal property tax. And that's, that's the property taxes that are, that's paid by businesses on, basically on the equipment that they're using in their operation. The state replaced that with the commercial activity tax. And initially, there was going to be a phase up of that where the state would reimburse, would reimburse the city for losses that had sustained as a result of that. Well, that lasted a year or two, and then the state eliminated, eliminated that. And the other major hit that the city took is, was a result of the housing prices, which we all, you know, we all know. Property values in the city actually stagnated. Total residential property values in 2018 in Willoughby Hills are about $60 million less than they were in 2008. And that's just the direct, you know, it's a direct relation of the, straightened tide to the, you know, to the economy. At one point, at one point, they were about, in that 10-year period, at one point, they were about $1,000,000 greater than they were in 2008. When you pay your property taxes, the property tax bill that you receive in, in Ohio, county auditors are responsible for administering the property tax and pay the, pay the county treasurer. However, when you pay your tax bill, you're actually paying property tax bills from the city, the county, the school district, and several of the, several smaller taxing entities. So about, maybe about 10% of what you pay in property taxes comes to the city. About 75% goes, supports the school district. Property taxes are the school's primary, primary funding sources. So all in all, as I said, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a challenging time. Unfortunately, you know, this year, income tax has continued to grow with inflation. And hopefully, the, the economy improves and that will, and that will continue. But we've managed to, I think through, you know, through the good management of, of everybody up here, we've managed to, we've managed to live within our, live within our needs. Some things we can control, some things that, you know, that we can't control. This year's, you know, I mentioned the, the fund balance in 2008 was $18,000. At the end of, at the end of 2017, the general fund balance was, was approximately, approximately $1.3 million. And, you know, the fund balance is, is an, is an important component of, you know, of the city's financial health. Because it's like your, it's like your savings account. None of us, you know, hopefully, none of us, you know, would go into like, some savings in the bank. And that's really what the, and that's really what the, what the general fund balance says. It's, it's one-time money that the state's accumulated since it was first, since it was first founded. And what it, it's, 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 it's the emergency, it's the emergency source of funds to tap into when things, when things arise that we don't anticipate, either, you know, either expenses that we don't anticipate. Or on the, you know, the good side, occasionally, there's opportunities that require us to put money forward. And Mark mentioned that we've been, you know, we've made, we've been successfully tapping into grants with the, with the county that require us to spend the money upfront and then be reimbursed. Having fund balances enables us to do that. It also helps, you know, because just like, you know, just like your expenses, the city's expenses don't, you know, they don't come in one, one twelfth each month. The revenue doesn't come in one twelfth each month. So fund balances cushion the cash, cushion the cash flow. That's pretty much it without worrying, you know, too much.
Thank you, Frank. And next, we're going to hear from Lou DiMaddio. He's a lieutenant on our fire department. And he can tell us skinny on the fire department.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Lou DiMaddio, Lieutenant over at the fire department. Lieutenant Sarzen, who's our acting chief's out of town, so he asked me to stand in for him on site. We interact with a lot of people on a daily basis. And it's kind of surprising to find out how many people don't really know exactly what we do or how we operate. So we appreciate opportunities like this to, to meet with the public and kind of tell you what we do and how we do it. So it's good to see a, a good turnout here tonight. Just going to give you a quick recap on the fire department, some of our statistics from last year, what we did, what we're looking to hopefully do in 18. So bear with me as I look down at my notes here with all my numbers. So we're a combination career, part-time department. We have nine career members, three of which are lieutenants for the shift officers that run the shift day-to-day. We have 15 to 20 active part-time members on the roster. Minimum staffing is five people on duty 24/7. We work three shifts, 24 on, 48 off. Part-timers work 12 or 24-hour shifts, depending on how they sign up to work. So we have a lot of people that continue to work hard to meet the demands of the community and a lot of mandates by the government, federal, state government. Our run volume has continued to increase year to year. 2017 was no exception. For the first time in our department history, we took over 2,000 emergency runs. In 2017, we ran 2,082 runs, which is 12% over last year, 22% over the year before, and it's a 33% increase over the last five years. It's about 500 additional runs we've taken. Of an interesting note, and it seems to be a Willoughby Hills thing, and we talked to other departments. Of those, just over 2,000 runs, 32% of them are overlapping runs, which means when we're out on one call, another one comes in at the same time. So we're, we're handling multiple runs, 32, 32.5% of the time. So being able to cover that second run is important for us because the, you know, regardless of when you call 911, you expect the same response, whether it's our first run or second run. And it's not a statistical thing, but it seems that the second run is always worse than the first, which is kind of funny, but on the other hand, it's a little nerve-wracking because usually we're shorter staffed on the second run. So that can be a little challenging for us. As far as fire runs, we had 74 fires, 31 of which were structure fires. Fortunately, only eight of those were in Willoughby Hills. We run a lot of mutual aid and auto aid with our surrounding cities. So like I said, only eight of those were Willoughby Hills. In addition to that, we had 20, about 20 what we call cooking fires. So they're not full-blown structure fires, but we get a lot of cooking fires in the apartments and single-family homes. So not a lot of newsworthy-type fires, but we do, we do run a lot of fires. 1,600-plus of those were EMS and rescue calls. We had 67 what we call hazardous conditions, which were like wires down, electrical hazards inside a home, different dangerous situations, but they weren't fires. And then about the remaining 300-plus calls were service runs, food retention calls, false alarms, things like that. As far as fire loss for 2017, and these are approximate numbers, about $12,000 in fire loss. The other side of it that we like to look at is that it was approximately $18 million that we were able to protect. Our highest fire loss was about $3,000. It was a fire down on Aspen Run, which is the townhouses down at Pine Ridge. I believe that was a, some sort of outside fire that extended to the, to the house, to the townhouse. We had just over 1,500 EMS patient encounters with just over 1,100 transports to the hospital. As far as which hospital we transport to, a lot of people always ask us that. Our number-one hospital was Hillcrest with 34, 34% of the transports, followed by Lake West and Richmond. But depending on patient's condition and manpower and everything, we'll pretty much be able to transport wherever the patient wants to go as long as they're stable and if they don't need to go to a specialty facility like a trauma center or a stroke center, things like that. One of the unique things about Willoughby Hills and one of the reasons I, I really enjoy working here, I've been here, this year will be 22 years. It's a very diverse response district as far as fire service goes. And it presents a lot of challenges, which we enjoy. You know, we have 900 square-foot houses. We have 5,000 square-foot houses. We have high-rises. We have 60-plus lane miles of freeway that we cover. The metro parks, we have the Sugar River, the approach to the airport. So really, the only thing we don't have to deal with here is railroad tracks. But we go mutually aid, so we do deal with that. But as far as in the city, it's a, it's a very diverse field of calls that we have to handle. And we do cover Wait Hill also. People always ask us what types of calls we go on. Our top five occupancy types, 32% of our calls are to multifamily dwellings, which are apartments, townhouses, things like that. Number two is 30% to single-family homes. And then next is doctors' offices, clinics, things like that, and the freeways. And then number five is incidents that happen in the roadway. Our top five, top five busiest occupancies that we went to, number one was Cleveland Clinic with 11% of our runs. The new senior apartments was number two with 9%, followed by the three high-rise buildings or apartment complexes, Pine Ridge, Willoughby Hills Towers, and then Bishop Park. And just a side note, we have approximately 2,100 high-rise units, which is the most in Lake County that we are responsible for protecting. A lot of people don't realize the high-rises are actually in Willoughby Hills because they're right on the border, but we do cover eight high-rise buildings. As far as time of day, 68% of our runs came in between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM, which means that about a third of our runs come in at night, between 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM. Our average response time is three to five minutes, depending on where it's at. Obviously, going in the Wait Hills, a little longer. If it's a fire call, it takes a little longer because we have to turn out. But we're out the door. Our goal is less than a minute to be out the door. Mutual aid, we went mutually aid to other cities 102 times, and we received mutually aid 77 times. Some non-incident statistics, we logged about 850 hours of maintenance. That's vehicle maintenance, station maintenance, equipment maintenance. And the big thing about this is it saves the city from having to send stuff out to get fixed, which costs money. So we try and do as much in-house as we can to maintain our equipment and our vehicles. We logged a little over 1,500 hours of training, and that's fire, EMS, hazmat, technical rescue, officer training, district familiarization, so getting out and learning the buildings, learning the streets, driver's training. We're driving pretty big trucks and it takes some practice, so we get out and do that to make sure we're driving safely. And a lot of that is to, to keep up with the, the latest trends and challenges that we face. And we also have recertification requirements that we have to fulfill to maintain our paramedic card, our fire card, hazmat, all of that. So training is a, is a very important aspect of our job. And finally, we had about 230-plus hours of public relations and education. We get out to the schools, the daycares, we do fire safety talks, station tours. We go to, well, our big one, Touch a Truck, hopefully everybody knows about that. That's our biggest PR event of the year. So like I said, a lot of getting out and talking to people and educating them on fire safety and answering their questions. Some highlights from last year. Firefighter Tim Mackey retired after 30-some years of service. We replaced him with firefighter Nathan Hoffman. It was a difficult decision picking, picking our replacement, which is a good thing because we have a lot of good people that work for us. I, I can't say enough about the people that we have working on the department, very dedicated, skilled, educated people that are responding to help the public. So very proud of that. Something we did in 17 was we, for a while, our staffing was down to four as a minimum. We were able to get that back up to five, which really helps us out with covering that second run. Because with four people, a lot of times, we were having to mutually aid out that second run, which just adds some time into that. So you're waiting a little longer for help to get there from another city. And also having five people on duty helps keep the overtime down. Because when you have one person call off or sick or whatever, it's not dropping us to a critical level where we're filling it with, with overtime. Over the past year or so, we hired about five part-timers. We were short for a while, so hiring those guys really helped with our staffing. We do need to hire a few more in 2018. The biggest problem is that we hire really good people. The problem is, is they go and get hired full-time elsewhere. So we, it's constantly, we're trying to re, keep our staffing where it needs to be. So we try and stay ahead of the curve on that. The backup rescue squad had the power lift system installed in it last year. For those not familiar, it was in 16, we got the power cots and the lift system in the first-out rescue squad. And we got these- And we got these on a grant from the Bureau of Workers' Comp. And what they are, it's hydraulically powered cots. And then the rescue squad has a lift system that we put the cot into and it lifts it up into the squad. And the big thing with that is that Workers' Comp determined that it was cheaper to pay for this equipment than it was for all the bad injuries. So it is safer for us lifting, we're not lifting as much. A lot of times you're bent over in a funny, funny position, so people are getting hurt. But it's also safer for the patient because there's less chance of us dropping somebody. It's safer in the back of the squad because these systems secure the cot into the back of the squad more securely. So if we do get into an accident, you're safer as a patient. So it works out, it's been working out pretty well. And it's nice having the lift system in the backup squad because like I said, the second call is usually less staffed than the first call. So we had less people lifting more weight. So it's, we're very happy to have that. We continue to be active in what we call special teams. Cities aren't usually able to provide certain services on their own because of the equipment and the training and the cost of that. So we have what we call special teams, hazmat, technical rescue, fire investigation. We have one of our guys, he's the SWAT medic for the West End SWAT team. And as of this year, or as of twenty seventeen, we have a new team called the Public Safety UAS Team, which everybody knows as the drone team. We have two of us that are licensed FAA remote pilots, so we participate in that. We've actually had twenty-plus callouts since its inception in June. And what that's for is it's helpful with fire calls, being able to get up above the scene and see where the fire is going, where we can't see that from ground level. Hazmat calls, we can send the drone down range to a train derailment or a truck lift over instead of having to send our own people down there, putting them at risk. Lost or missing persons tends to be the, the most occasion that we've used it for. So it's been working out pretty well. We implemented a new mobile EMS reporting program, which works on a tablet. So instead of doing everything on paper, coming back to the station, doing our reports, we're able to collect that data in the field on the tablet. And this is better because it helps get the information to the emergency room faster. It's better for the patient to have that information transferred that much more quickly. Because if we come back and get another call, it's just a delay of that information getting to the emergency room. It helps us obtain more grant money because of electronic reporting. Typically, our medics are able to get the report done on the way back from the hospital. So they're, they're coming back to quarters with the report pretty much done. The mayor wanted me to talk about overdoses, it's a big topic, narcotic overdoses. And Willoughby Hills, while people think of Willoughby Hills as a quiet community, and it is, we do see our share of, lack of a better term, action. We do have a lot of overdoses. It slowed down a little bit, but it tends to be cycling. Sometimes you have a lot and then for a couple of months it slows down. I look back at our patient care reports for last year, we had eleven documented administrations of Narcan, which is the reversing drug for that. The problem is, is that it's not a hundred percent accurate picture of what we deal with because not every overdose gets Narcan. If they're breathing adequately, sometimes we hold off on giving that because we don't want to wake them up and, you know, in that state. The other problem is, is I can't just query overdoses because a lot of those calls come in as unconscious person, somebody not breathing, alter mental status. So it's kind of hard to, kind of hard to track that, but we have seen our share of those. And it's, you know, a broad range of demographics as far as people. It happens in homes, we get people in gas station bathrooms, we've had people, we get reports of cars stopped in the middle of the freeway. We get there and there's two or three unconscious people in the car sitting in the middle of the freeway. It's just, it's crazy. So we've been dealing with that. As far as twenty eighteen, we're looking to, as I said before, hire some more part timers to maintain our staffing. Council did recently approve the addition of three full timers, which would bring us up to twelve. So we're working with City Hall and Finance and evaluating the sustainability of that and how we're gonna, how we're gonna work that out the best for the fire department and the best for the community. Fire prevention is something that in the past, because of basically stagnant staffing levels and increased call volume, our fire prevention has kind of suffered because some, something has to give at that point. So recently, we've been trying to ramp up our inspections and get back out and, and do those inspections in the business occupancies. This is important for obviously the safety of the businesses, the people visiting them, but as well as for firefighter safety. If we do get a fire in that building, we've been in there, we've tried to take care of the hazards that might be, that might exist. It also helps as far as insurance ratings go if we're, if we're out there inspecting and keeping the hazards out, it's better for the business owner. Some big ticket items that we're looking to replace. For us, we're, I guess dictated by NFPA standards. So we constantly have to evaluate our, our equipment and maintain those standards. Our turnout gear is, I think this year is the ten-year mark and they recommend replacement of gear every ten years. So we've been doing that. It's about three thousand dollars for a full set of firefighting turnout gear. So we try and do a couple of sets a year to, to rotate them out. Our air packs are self-contained breathing apparatus, those are about five thousand dollars a pack. Those are about three NFPA additions passed. They're almost about twenty years old. We did apply for a federal fire grant last year to replace our gear and our packs and we were not awarded that. So it kind of falls back on the, on us to try and find a way to fund that. So we've been working on that. We do, we have several people that do write grants. We work hard to try and offset the costs that the city has to pay. This year, our AFT grant, we wrote for an upgrade to our diesel exhaust removal system in the fire station. It's a big, cancer is a big problem in the fire service and part of that is the diesel exhaust that we're breathing in and getting all over our gear and all of our equipment. So that's a priority for us. We did receive some smaller grants for EMS equipment, which can be pretty expensive. Some fire hoods, fire gloves, different miscellaneous equipment like that, we did, we did get covered. As far as apparatus, our reserve fire engine is about twenty-one years old this year. And it's to the point where the mechanics are telling us it's going to cost more to fix it than to buy a new one. So we're working with the city to, to look into how to replace that, as well as our backup rescue squad, which is about twelve years old. So we're, we're looking into that as far as replacement or remount on that. Miscellaneous station repairs, our front pad, we're looking at getting, to fix that up, it's getting a little worn. Just some miscellaneous plumbing issues. It's hard to believe our station was renovated, it's been sixteen years, two thousand two is when it was finished, so time flies, things are starting to, starting to pop up. That's all I have, hopefully that wasn't too much. If you ever have any questions, don't hesitate to call us. We are all over social media, so you can follow us on that for, for other information and stuff like that. Oh, I thank you for your time.
Thanks Lou. One thing I wanted to mention, although we've got a grant this year for thirty-four, thirty-six thousand dollars. We're trying to replace all the windows in the fire station and the front half of City Hall with that grant. So the next couple of weeks, we'll have the numbers in and we'll be able to push for the grant. Now, the grant is from NOPAC. NOPAC is the electric illuminating company. And NOPAC, most of you subscribe to NOPAC. And they are giving a three-year grant, it's thirty-six thousand dollars a year to us. And the first year, we're looking at the windows. So next on our agenda is Police Chief Kellman, and take it away.
I'm gonna yield my time to the firefighter. By the way, I like long walks on the beach and sunset. Now, you've all been very patient and I'm grateful that you're here. I think it's very important to have this time as my colleagues. You know, we're one prong in the whole public safety division for the city. It involves Mark and all the other divisions, Mayor's Court, Fire Department, and the Police Department. What's unique about us is that we provide not only law enforcement services to the city, but we also have the emergency dispatch center within our facility that we manage and oversee. So those are some things that are important. I'm not going to hit on a lot of the statistics. Our annual report has just been completed and will be posted on our website. And there's also on our website, there's a monthly report that we do to provide statistics on our runs and calls for service that you might find interesting. On our website, there's also a lot of reference material and information that you may find helpful for home security and other programs that are offered from other state, local, and federal agencies. So, and the other thing I caution you about, when you talk about statistics for law enforcement, this isn't going to stay up here, is that, you know, we're, we're involved in proactive and reactive calls for service, all right? So we're called for people that need help, but we're also out there looking to identify and arrest the bad people. The people that are out committing crimes and going through our communities. So when you look at statistics for law enforcement, it can be really misconceiving when you look at that because it's really hard to delineate between what we're being called to and what we're proactively enforcing through traffic stops. Many of you may know that most of the criminal elements today are driving, either stolen cars or other cars or cars that they're borrowing. So we are very proactive in our traffic enforcement. And different in the judge, I recognize a lot of faces out here, but hopefully it's all for good reasons. And if you have made donations to the city through the Mayor's Court, we're grateful for that. But you know, the statistics can be, can be misleading, so we have to be careful with that. You know, a lot of our statistics are proactively developed. I'm very proud of the men and women that work in our enforcement Police Department. They do a great job. You know, we've been sued federally sometimes, we've won all of our cases. We have good policies and procedures and training, we hire some of the best around that you can find. We're one of the only law enforcement agencies in this area that I'm aware of that has a lateral transfer program that allows us when we have openings to go out and bring in people through our civil service process that have already been seasoned and experienced officers from other departments. And recently, out of the three that we hired, we brought in two from other agencies that have been a great help. Helps us through the training curve, getting them out, running and moving and, and doing the job we need them to do out in the, out on the road. I will share a couple of statistics because I think it's important. We cover twelve and a half square miles, we have some of the largest interstate of any city outside of Columbus and Cleveland. Often people are misinformed that, you know, State Patrol or other people cover that. We are the enforcement agency for the highway within our city. So we do provide traffic enforcement locally as well as down on the interstate. And any crashes or hazmat or EMS calls, fire calls, we also respond to that. The Police Department has forty-one people employed, twenty-one full-time officers, which is includes me, eight part-time officers, although we're obligated, eligible for twenty. We have eight full-time dispatchers, two part-time dispatchers, and administrative staff of two. That's our court, community service officer, and Debbie Semick, who's my executive assistant. We've done some things, we've, we've had two additional full-time police officers last year, which we're grateful for. It's been a long time coming. We're hoping to get a couple more and as the most agencies have talked about, part-time service for us is tough. They get hired, we get the cream of the crop, they go on to other full-time agencies. Some of the people we have right now in that staff are full-time with other departments. They come in and work traffic enforcement with us. And that's a win-win for us because they're well-trained and qualified for their department. They come in and work part-time for us when they're available, reduces our liability and the potential for lawsuits. One of the key components in dispatch is that we've handled over seventeen thousand calls into our dispatch center. That's down a couple thousand from the last few years where we've been close to twenty thousand over the last two to three years. Some of that is from our traffic enforcement. You may have noticed, if you've been here any time, that we haven't seen the motorcycles or the traffic enforcement is, is large as we have been in the past. And that's because of the lack of part-time people. We used to have four part-time traffic officers working pretty much forty hours a week. We have zero at this point, other than once the part timers coming in. So that's been a transition, working with the court and with our staff to try and increase those numbers, hire those part-time people, and then get them back out on the street. Critical component for us that's coming up in the future is the dispatch center. Technology is very costly and that is something that we are working with to try and maintain that with our dispatch center. Coho Bay County has been reduced to three centers, they're going to go back up to five. But you're seeing that there's a push throughout the country to regionalize your dispatch centers. So that's something that we, we continue to work on, we're conscious of it. And we still, with the dispatchers we have, we've hired good people, they're well-trained, and we try to provide the best service that we can through that. But that's an area that we are continuing to look at. One of the issues that's come up that I wanted to touch on is school safety, that's a big issue right now. I can tell you that all of our officers are trained to enter in, identify, and eliminate any threat that is in, in a school or any building for that matter. Any office building, Cleveland Clinic, we've provided training at the Cleveland Clinic for active shooters. We've coordinated, in fact, all the law enforcement agencies in this area are all on the same page of how we will react and respond to a school shooting if called. We had one a few years ago in Willoughby South and it worked perfectly. There was a teacher that intervened, which if that's what they choose to do, I'm certainly not going to criticize that. And it worked out well in that case. But officers on scene from all over the West End of Lake County entered and made entry in and took care of that situation. So can I assure you that that is always on our mind and we are prepared to handle that. We have a number of our officers that are trained and participate in the West End SWAT team. We work with the Western Lake County Agencies to do that. The biggest thing we look at, we're pretty stable as far as our cost and service. We try to get at least three to four police cars every year. The cost of a car is about twenty-five to thirty thousand. And what sometimes people don't realize is there's about thirty thousand dollars worth of equipment that goes into those cars. So we try to replace our cars every three to four years. They are running twenty-four seven as we, you know, patrol the areas of the city. We try to maintain our computers within the department, the software, and of course, the technology that's in our dispatch center. That's kind of the hub for all the city in our IT room. We have all the servers and the, and the IT equipment that's in there that we provide for that. The, you know, I, I just want to mention too, when we looked at our overtime for this year, we saw that we had at least five officers last year that were out on medical leave. The two officers that were shot are classic. Craig Anderson is back to work, Corey Planexek is coming back next week. And that trial, that case should be coming up shortly. We've been working with the Lake County Prosecutor's Office with that. But with that, when the shooting happened and this guy was in the hospital, we had to provide the security to make sure he didn't leave the hospital. Our, you know, Lake County Jail will not take the prisoner into custody until he's medically cleared and able to be admitted to the jail. So there was a significant cost to our city last year for us working twenty-four seven to maintain security that he didn't leave the facility where he was being treated and also rehab. So that kind of threw our numbers off for last year. But I can assure you that, you know, we run lean and mean as every department is here, we don't ask for anything that we don't need. We've taken some command positions, lieutenant and sergeant, and eliminated those and made those position full-time police officers to put more cops on the street to provide services in the community. So we're very grateful for your support and I look forward to answering any questions. The one thing that I would mention is that if you have any current concerns or questions about the Police Department, please feel free to call me. All of our numbers are on the website and you can get it through City Hall or through dispatch. Oftentimes, I'll see that people will bypass me and go to the mayor and he's going to bring you right back to me because I'm going to have most of the information you need. And then if you're not happy with me, then he's the safety director and you can talk with him about how I handled it. So we're grateful for your support. We enjoy working with everyone who's up here, this is a great team of people and I can, you know, I've, I've been in the public safety for forty-two years. I've been here as the chief since two thousand. I've worked over in the United States and I can tell you that we have a great team of people between all these agencies up here. And it's an honor for me to be part of this team. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Now I'd like to open it for questions. Does anybody have any questions? Frank?
I have two questions. The first one is for the magistrate. And my question is, what qualifications does the magistrate have to have to hold that position?
Larry left, but.
Larry goes through training every year through the Ohio Municipal League. He's required to get so many hours of time for, to hear cases for DUI, which we don't hear DUI cases. Larry still does it to maintain that accreditation with the state, with the Ohio Municipal League, which is, it's, it's the program through the Supreme Court as well. So he gets his time through that. I think it's six hours of traffic and six hours of OVI training.
Does he have to be an attorney?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
My second question is for the finance, and it's just, how mu, since Governor Kasich has been governor, how much has the city lost in local government funds? That we have to find somewhere else?
Yeah, just a second, I'll tell you. I already did that on my paper.
I can answer that, a lot.
Yes. In terms of, in terms of local government funds, in 2008, the city received 829,000, almost 830,000 dollars, local government funding from the state. In 2018, we were anticipating receiving about 390,000 dollars. So, that's about a 450,000 dollar decrease. For those of you not familiar with local government fund, that's really your money coming back to you. The history of local government funds is that if you go back years and years ago, it goes back into the 1920s, in Ohio, the primary funding source for all governments was property taxes. And as the state moved away from property, took, moved away from property taxes, and took property, ability to let property tax away from the communities, they said that we will make it up, and we will create this, we create this local government fund to reimburse your losses. Over the years, the formula has been tweaked as other taxes were added. Probably the single biggest tweak was in the, it was in the early 1970s. I don't really remember this, but when the, when the, in the early 1970s, Ohio did not have a state income tax. When the state income tax was, was passed by the voters, the legislatures made the commitment to, you know, to the voters that a portion, a portion of the state income tax would be returned to the local governments. And that was added to the local government, local government formula. From my point of view, this change is something the state legislature has made to the local government fund. It's been, it's been a breach of promise to the citizens of the state. Local government fund, you know, is funded by percentages of different, of different taxes that the state, that the state collects. So, basically, what the state remitted to the, to the, to all the local government funds, the city, the county, we've all, we've all suffered this kind of loss. Our vote rose and sunk with the amount of tax that the state collected. If they had simply left the formula alone, we would have been, you know, in general, we would have been fine. We also lost, a couple of years ago, the state eliminated the Ohio estate tax. I know that this is some, this is some, probably some people's grandfather's issue, but the estate tax, the estate tax provided the city, you know, again, it would vary, but it provided the city anywhere from 10 or 20,000 dollars a year up to about 500,000 dollars a year. And that was basically the last version of the estate tax. Eighty percent of the, eighty percent of the state tax that was paid by in-state was returned to the municipalities, the locality where the person, where the person lived. This change, in the state of, in the state of Ohio, only about 8,000, only about 8,000 people actually pay the state tax. And it took, it also took advantage of the federal tax, of the federal tax credit. So, basically, when Ohio remade the estate tax, unless there's changes in the federal law, that money basically, instead of, instead of staying in Ohio, is now going to, is now going to the government. You know, overall, as I mentioned, using 2000 as a benchmark, 2008, the state received 1.7 million dollars in funding from all sources from the state of Ohio. In 2018, we're anticipating approximately 1.1 million dollars in state funding. I hope that answered your question.
I had heard it was about 1.4 million cumulatively.
Well, yeah, cumulative would be, I'd have to add it up. You have me, you have me.
Thanks.
Hi. Is there any plans for Lomans Plaza and development of maybe light industry, or something where you could get some of that?
Lomans Plaza currently is owned by a gentleman that lives in Kirkland. And basically, he's redone the parking lots, put new lights in, and he's trying to get tenants. The first tenant is going to be a Spire Fitness Center, and he's really trying to make it a retail center. But we had some inquiries for other things on the horizon, and they're just coming to fruition now. So, whether it be the shop is Willoughby Hills, which is Lomans Plaza, or Spiegel Enterprises, which is Marx, and then, and the motorcycle shop, there's people actively looking at those. So, it just takes some time. He's painted the shops and made it attractive, he's just waiting for the right person to come and occupy that.
Lomans Plaza is a really important part of, you know, a really important part of the community, but from a financial point of view, retail doesn't pay a lot, doesn't pay a lot of taxes. A hundred thousand dollars, primarily, the revenue we primarily generate from Lomans Plaza is income tax, the payroll tax of employees. A hundred thousand dollars of, you know, income, of payroll generates 2,000 dollars in taxes for the city. It's, but it's, but the other thing is, is that it's critical that it be, you know, that it be redeveloped, that it be redeveloped well, because a strong living environment overall, you know, again, it raises, it raises a tide for, you know, for all of us, it makes it a more desirable place, it makes, makes our residential property more valuable, because it's a more desirable place to live and live.
Yes. Because I'd like to thank Mayor and Gloria. I haven't heard that you say Whisper's program is, was a wonderful program in 2017. I don't know if anyone's familiar with that, but you helped senior citizens free of charge, no money, you donated your time, and I applaud. Thank you.
I have two questions. The first is, my understanding is that moving some of the permitting to Lake County isn't saving the city any money, so I'm curious why we did that?
Well, we did it because I proposed the building inspector to council, and they refused to hire him. So, we chose to, the only thing we could do is transfer the building department to Lake County. Now, you have to come to the planning and zoning committee first, get a zoning certificate, and then go out to Lake County to get your permit. Pete DeFranco does the zoning, so basically, we opted to hire a person for 50,000 dollars a year, and it would have brought 40,000 dollars or so in registration fees, which we don't receive, Lake County, it's at, but now we're paying just for zoning Pete to do that, and it's probably more than the cost of the new building inspector.
And my second question is about an audit, a financial audit, that I understand council's insisting the city go through?
Yes.
I mean, what's the reasoning and, I mean, what's the validity for spending 14,000 or so?
I, personally, I don't see the validity in it. We welcome the investigation, but I don't see anything that they're going to find for, from that.
Dave?
My name is Dave Nicktean, 33-year resident of Willoughby Hills. Thank you, Mayor, and your administration for what you have done and what you're doing for our community. Welcome to the newest member of your administrative team, Gretchen Whitebrick. Gretchen and I worked for over 20 years at John Carroll University. Welcome. I want to change the agenda a little bit. Personal opinion, okay? Question, how many members of our present city council are here this evening?
I wondered that too.
Chris Howland. Name, please?
Janet Micah. Laura Page-Mo.
Okay. Okay. Where are the other members of our city council? Where is John Fletchnick in particular? Another name, Dale Fellows. Where's Dale Fellows? Where's Nancy Fellows? Thanks for this turnout to you citizens of Willoughby Hills. We need more of this. We need open dialogue about the real issues in Willoughby Hills, not any politics put out by Dale Fellows and Republican Party using John Fletchnick as a mouthpiece. Thank you.
On the east cell tower you said, that's going in on Miller Road, beginning next, beginning in March, there's construction. I'm not too familiar where Miller Road is. It's just on the north side of I-90? Okay. Okay, okay. Has there ever been any talk about how to improve the cellphone reception along Dodd Road down there in the valley?
There was some talk about it, and there was a proposed tower at the Grange, but that Met Resistance and Planning Commission nicked that, and so did Wade Hill nicked their cell tower, which would have helped. This one on West Miller won't help that situation. It, it is helping the west end of town, because right by the funeral home, you can't get any reception, so it's going to correct that problem and the whole west end. Now, they do have options, the cellphone companies have options to go to these mini towers, they don't need any requirements for city approval, they go on a phone call, but those are just being talked about now, and they'll be coming maybe in the future.
Okay. I, I, I didn't think, even if the cell tower were constructed at the Grange, whether that, that would have affected the area down there, like on Trailers and Dodd Road, because it's really tucked down in there and not, not really line of sight to the Grange. So, you know, any help that you guys can do down there along the river would be helpful.
Okay.
Ideally, it would be nice to put a cell tower right on top of that high bluff on Kirkland, but I'm sure those people won't, won't do it.
Yes?
Yeah, again, to back to the cell tower, is that going in that vacant lot behind, I mean, like, right on the Wickliff line there?
Yes, right on the Wickliff line. It's on the piece of property, it's about eight acres, that we got from Osborne in the delinquent tax issue. So, we got eight acres, and they're talking about some development there too, so we are hoping that that can be developed. A pump station, and it's right next to the pump station, so that'll be cordoned off, and the rest is for sale. Yes?
Chief Collins, do we have a growing drug problem in Willoughby Hills?
I don't believe so. You know, we're seeing what most communities do, and that's the addictive qualities of the opium-based drugs that are on the street. We work closely with the local communities here, as well as Lake County Narcotics and the federal agencies, and I think, as Lou pointed out, what we see from overdoses, overdoses, it kind of comes and goes, but I don't think we're seeing more of it in this community than we have any other time.
A lot of it's transient, people in and out of the city, like, it's like gas stations.
Well, one of the things I wanted to point out about that too, is that when I talked about how aggressive we are, you know, we don't really apologize for that. And we've arrested people in Euclid on the border that don't want to come into our city. We have three K-9 units, all of our patrol officers are trained in proactive, aggressive patrol, going beyond the traffic stop, asking questions, looking for what's in the car, picking up indicators of signs of drug abuse, drug use. So, you know, we're pulling a lot of guns, a lot of drugs, from people that are transient within the community on the freeway. So, you know, right or wrong, we have kind of a reputation of being, you know, proactive, and those people are hopefully choosing to go somewhere else. It is all around us, it's part of, you know, society in this country, but we're working very hard with our local partners on the west end, and Wickliff and others, to really put a dent in that. And, and the word is out there. The other thing that we've done with the mayor's blessing is that we, when we arrest people on warrants now, we're arresting them, we're taking them to the county jail, no questions asked. We're not personally, we're not giving PR bonds or personal bond if somebody has active warrants. You know, our warrant arrests are up because we are making more traffic stops. One of the things with proactive enforcement is, you know, high volume of traffic stops, asking questions, where are they from, why are they in our community, do they live here, what are they doing here, you know, especially after hours and other times. So, our guys are really good about identifying that type of activity coming in and out and into the city. So, I'm very proud of their efforts, and I think it has a lot to do with what we're not seeing, not that it's not happening in other places, but we're trying to keep that element out of our city. We don't apologize for that, so we're proud of that.
Chief Collins, something I have noticed that near Richmond Heights Hospital, I see Richmond Heights Police Officer, they sit on the borderline from Lake County. So, my question to you, if they stop a car that's coming out of Lake County, who get the revenue on that? Richmond Heights?
Yeah, if they're making the stop and they have the probable cause for the stop or any criminal violations, they would, they would handle it through their court.
Okay. So, I would just wonder, why would they sit so close to the borderlines, they're trying to get Lake County coming over?
Well, it's not so much they're trying to get it to Lake County. It's not that they're trying to get so much Lake County, but they're looking at the flow of traffic that's coming. When you're coming off the interstate highway, you know, where a lot of people travel, they take that right and they head down into the other parts of the community. You know, that's one of the reasons we've seen, you know, again, the criminal elements out there, there's, there's an, to answer some of your questions, there's an increase in younger gang activity in our cities, especially in Cleveland. You've seen these smashing grabs of ATM machines, and stolen cars, you know, and, and the other, the stolen car activity and so forth. So, you know, we're seeing a lot of that, and we're trying to identify that and get them, but they're coming off of those freeways, they're looking for easy access on and off, which we have both at Sam Center Road and Bishop Road. So, most of us, and we also work very closely, not only with Lake County agencies, but with Richmond Heights, and Euclid, and, you know, Mayfield, Mayfield Village, and so forth. So, we're all kind of on the same page. The other thing we're doing is we're sharing information when it comes to the drug activity, what we're seeing, you know, there's a great network of sharing that's going on between these departments to identify that and keep track of it.
I'm just kind of going along with that, we have a large area of Metro Parks in our community, does that feed into any of this drug trafficking that might be going on?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I think the Metro Parks does a great job, you know, we work with the Cleveland Metro Park, we have concurrent jurisdiction in there, but I haven't seen, I'm not aware of any...
Without jinxing us, I don't think we've had even one overdose or anything in the park.
Yeah, I think we've been very fortunate there. But again, you've got to go through a lot of our city to get to those areas, and I think they're... they're trying to stay out of there. You know, we've arrested people down on the border by Richmond Heights, and they didn't even know they were in Willoughby Hills, and they may come and say, oh, damn, if I'd have been while I was here, I wouldn't even come over here. So we like that. We like it.
Yes. Is there any estimate on what the cost of the upcoming legal battle next month is gonna cost the city?
No, there isn't.
Legal fees and...
I wish I could tell you.
I have a question about that. My understanding is that the city attorney doesn't represent the mayor or the council, but is supposed to represent and, and the city and ensure that everyone's following the laws and regulations and ordinances passed in the city.
Yes, it should. Yes.
I have a question also about street resurfacing, about how often our residential roads resurface or repaired. I see a small list of ones that are...
It's very expensive to redo streets. Now they have milling and filling and recycling of the old asphalt right in place so they don't have to haul it out and do it. We do as many streets as we can, worst always first. Yeah, but asphalt streets usually last about twenty-five years, and we patch that in between, and concrete streets last maybe thirty years, but, right?
Well, there is maintenance to it, but the difference between what we're doing now and some things that are done in the past, you could mill an inch off a road and put an inch and a half back on. That's, that's just a Band-Aid. It's gonna work, it looks good, but it's still gonna fall apart, so what we're doing now is we're recycling the road into the base. So you're coming up with like a, an eight or nine-inch detail of what they put in there, it sits for like seven days, and then you become, it becomes like a nine-inch hard, thick base, where then we put our asphalt on top of that. So you're talking ten, eleven inches thick of solid mass, so that's gonna last a lot longer, so that's another thing that, you could go around the city and put an inch and a half on every road.
The smaller, yeah.
Like, I live on Cricket Lane, and that's what they did there, and it's, it's already in bad shape, but it's just not the right way to do it, but you can only do it what you can afford to do.
Do you want to commend you for filling that nice hole on the River Road Hill rather quickly? So that was a good dodge in the dark, which was hard. And then also about the edges of the road. I know there is some crumbling edges on River Road through the metro park area. Some of those crumbling pieces have been, I noticed when I moved back in 2015, that have not been repaired at all.
Well, it's, it's, there's a lot worse streets, so that's how we attack it, and unfortunately, we only have a certain amount of money to do a certain amount of repairs, and I believe we get real close to maxing that out early on, and we actually stop doing it, but if they are really bad, then we do do them, but like I said, a lot of it's Birm issues. Down in the metro parks, it's always shaded, and our streets that are shaded, they stay wet longer and that deteriorates the road.
There's, there's one on a curve that's right into the white line, and I think it's very dangerous.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Just to take a little bit on what Mark was saying from the financial point of view, this year's budget has four hundred thousand dollars in major, major resurfacing projects. And, you know, West Streets have been done, the gentleman on the under will be working on that, but in terms of, you know, in terms of funding, we basically get funding, you know, for street maintenance from three sources. The city has a, has a proper tax levy that generates about five hundred thousand dollars for street projects, all kinds of street maintenance and equipment related, related to streets. The other two major funding sources at the city receive, through the state, are a portion of motor vehicle license fees and the gasoline taxes. And the motor vehicle license, we receive, we have a local, we have a local levy of five dollars, and then the county has another one, which we receive, and actually, two fifty for that. That hasn't changed probably in twenty years. The gasoline taxes, gasoline, revenue from gasoline taxes increasing maybe one percent a year, because it's not, the gasoline taxes aren't, aren't tied to the cost of gasoline rather than, it's, it's a certain number of cents per mile. So basically, we're trying to fund a 2018 street program on 1990 revenues, and you can, the county, the county has, the county engineer has a very similar problem because he has the same funding, he has the same funding sources, and the engineer is going to have, the state in the last budget gave the county the ability to add an additional five-dollar fee under the motor vehicle, your license plate, your license plate registration fee, and Cogga County has done it, and the engineer made a presentation to council last week, Lake County is most likely going to do it as well.
I just wondered about the, any revenues, I mean, we've got some state routes in the city.
Okay, that includes, that includes state routes. Actually, the motor vehicle license fees and the gasoline taxes, by state law, seven and a half percent of that money has to be dedicated to the state routes. Marx, Marx Department fills a chuckle and spends that, you know, that revenue. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't come, it doesn't compose, it's detaching what we're expected, what we're expected to maintain. We were able to, we were able to accomplish Route 91 a couple of years ago through, fortunately, we received a large federal grant, and so we're able to do that project here with Willoughby. Having to do that project through our own resources, we would have been in the debt market.
Thank you. I want to say that we recently closed the Pleasant Valley Bridge, and we reopened it last week, and they had to replace some plates underneath the east end of the bridge. We're gonna put up barriers to stop all trucks from going down there and crossing because that, that's what damaged the bridge in the first place, so these barriers, they'll be hung by chains, but they're low enough so no trucks can go through, but it's just one way to stop the trucks from going down. We're gonna have, we are having signs made, no trucks, so anything bigger than a pickup truck would not be allowed to go on there. Yes.
Hi, I'm just, I have a question. I'm sorry, I'm a taxpayer here. Who are the council members? Could you raise your hand, please? Council members? I'm relatively new to the city, I've been here ten years, and I just want to let you guys know, I'm absolutely disgusted by how you guys act with each other, how you engage with the mayor's office. This is not, this is very disappointing to somebody who's new to the city. It's embarrassing. You guys have got to learn to get along. You've got to learn to get along. You disagree, you both clearly disagree. Don't disrespect each other, and that's what I see. I used to be at every council meeting. I, I'm disgusted to go. I'm embarrassed to go. I'm embarrassed to tell people I'm from Willoughby Hills.
Absolutely.
You have got to know that other cities are looking at your behavior, and they're seeing how this is, is affecting the residents here and how it's affecting the day-to-day business. You guys have got to get it together. You've got to stop this, really. Thank you.
I have a twenty-nine-year resident.
Yeah, I would like to know specifically, specifically, one question. I would like to hear, what's this?
Come on, relax, settle down.
Point taken, point taken, correct? We disrespect each other, we can't even listen to each other. This is sad.
I'm a phony. Time is...
Hey, hey, one meeting. Time out. One meeting. We're not here to criticize anybody.
I am a relocated citizen. I've been here for twenty-nine years. I've been so pleased and proud to be a citizen of Willoughby Hills. I contribute and volunteer my time quite a bit for our city, and lately, yes, I am embarrassed to be here, not just the council, but also the things that are going on in our city with that shooting at Cadillac, and there's a SWAT team right around my corner for five hours one night. I want to know that I can live here peacefully and be protected by our police department and our fire department. I don't want to die in early death. I have many years to live on this earth yet, and I'd love to finish it off in Willoughby Hills peacefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I am really pleased to have this meeting here, and I agree, I think that your staff here do a really good job in trying to work within really tight budgets and stuff like that, but can you speak to even, I mean, we're in a time where we don't have a whole bunch of extra money around, you know, that's just the reality, and I understand that, but can you speak to then why some of the raises that you wanted to give people? Because when times are tight, you know, you just, people have to buck up and not take raises. So I don't understand some of the actions you were taking on monetary stuff.
The raises were based on the union, and right now, that's in litigation, so I can't really talk about that, but they're based on what overall they got, and the administration got a negative number over the last about four or five years, where the police, the fire, the service got a positive. Other than that, I, I can't comment until the litigation's over. Yes?
I have a few things. One is, is there, under planning and zoning, is there a completion date for new houses and for remodeling of houses to be done, where the job is completed?
No, there's no completion date. They just have to get started, I believe, within either six months or a year of the permit being issued.
We have several houses in the Willoughby Hills area that have been going on for years, years, and I just want to know who's, where would that fall on? Would that fall under planning and zoning to talk about, getting a, a completion date added to it, or does that go to the mayor? Who is responsible for getting that started?
Yeah, I believe that would fall under the planning and zoning code. It would need to be adopted by council, some type of change like that.
And possibly that could be done, because it's, it's ridiculous. There's a house over on Eddie and Rockefeller that's been go, going on process for, oh my God, at least ten years, and that's just not right. There should be, there should be a completion date, and the other thing is, Mr. Mayor, you said about the building inspector, that council did not approve the man that you wanted?
Yes.
And would you like to, it's my understanding then, and all the meetings that I have gone to, that the reason why they did not approve him, for one, he lived down near West Virginia and really did not have intentions of having permanent residency up there, and he was not certified in some things. That's why council did not approve it. Would you like to explain that?
Yes. He lived in Dayton, but he was willing to relocate up here. He used to have a business in, at Alpine Valley Seagull Resort, so he was gonna relocate, he was gonna keep his firm down there and visit monthly or bimonthly, but only on the weekends, so...
But he also worked in other states. He was not just gonna work here, he worked in other states, so he was not going to be available all the time.
It was just for the first month, but he was gonna come here full-time.
And the person, and the place that where he wanted to live was, gonna rent with some friends. It was not going to be so good.
So, who cares? Okay, if there's no further questions, please come to the...
Craft Fair?
The pancake breakfast, the next two Sundays, and thank you for coming.